Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, November 26, 2012. It's a couple of minutes after seven. We're going to have a public hearing tonight on the Far East Side rezoning. When we have a public hearing, we need everybody to sign in. If you have not signed in, the mayor has a sign-up sheet. Please, please do. And if you have something to say, please, everybody will have their turn at the dais. We're not timing the three-minute limit, but try to keep your remarks to -- three minutes are close, okay? We also have some committee meetings. Finance and Personnel Committee will be meeting, and City and Safety Services Committee will be meeting. We are going to begin with our public hearing introduced by Councilmember Paul.
Great. Thank you, Mr. President. The public hearing today is on relating to the Athens City Planning Commission recommendation that we change the zoning code for the Far East Side as per the map that has been on the website generated numerous times. Basically, what it asks for is that the R2 zones in the Far East Side, which is along East State Street up into, towards Sal's Park, that the R2 zones located in the Far East Side neighborhood be zoned to R1. And this has been a neighborhood-initiated process, and that is one of the things that our government does, is to respond to citizens' initiated processes. And so, it's gone through the process at the Planning Commission, through the public hearings at the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has forwarded the City Council their recommendation, and now we are holding our public hearing on that recommendation for the change in the zoning for the Far East Side. I'd like to give Paula an opportunity to speak because they're both on the Planning Commission.
Pretty much what you said. We're changing the entire R2 region that's on the Far East Side between South and --
Jacob to East State Street between Utah and Townsend Place. Again, this was initiated by various community members within that district or that area. There is, there actually are, we've had a couple of meetings on it. I think we had one at the Community Center earlier this year to cover it. There were pros and cons for each. Also, there was a discussion of whether to change some of the present B zones to R, and vice versa, but we tried keeping it simple. And that's all we're going to talk about at this point.
Thank you. Paula?
Just again, as a reminder, that any existing use as it stands now would be grandfathered up until the point in time where they wanted to change the use.
And I would like to reemphasize that there has been several public meetings on this. And I think one of the processes of this has really shown the partnership that private citizens and the city can have, because when they first introduced this idea, a lot of the business people were concerned about it. The citizens of the Far East Side did meet and work out the issues, and so I think that this is a good example. So I would like to open up the public hearing for public comment at this time. Maybe how you signed up for, raise your hand. Come on up. Whoever wants to come up, come on up.
There is a, there is a sign-up sheet on the table there. Please, sign your name, and then tell us your name also, please.
Good, I get to get it over. I'm Betty Sexton. I'm the president of 17 Graham Drive. My husband and I feel that we've somewhat been held hostage waiting for the legal ruling on 10 Graham Drive and this proposed zoning changes for these first blocks off East State Street. We love our neighborhood. It affords us luxury to walk almost everywhere. If you're in that area, you've probably seen us about. We go to the stores, movies, rec center, bike path, uptown Athens. We see ourselves in this house for some time, and we would like to build an addition and do some updates to our property. But we feel our largest financial asset risks further reduction in value if surrounded by more apartment buildings, so we continue to put off our renovations. Now, a little background, which they said already. Some of this idea to pursue the zoning changes began with the debacle regarding the apartment building at 10 Graham Drive. Some of us decided to become proactive and do as citizens are allowed to do, and I think we've gone through all those steps. I'm not going to rehash the 10 Graham Drive story, but it has made us aware during the last year and a half that the APC and the BZA can use its discretion in deciding what projects are approved or not. And that discretion can disregard city codes sometimes and the city's comprehensive plan. So just imagine yourself in our neighborhood, if you're familiar with the neighborhood, where a few years ago, one would have imagined that it would always be a neighborhood of modest, affordable homes. And now imagine it filled with apartment buildings and parking lots. I can imagine that scenario. In fact, I can look out some of our windows and see it already happening. So we're not asking for anything unusual. I understand that changes to zoning codes have been made in other residential areas of Athens. And we certainly, as stated here before, have no motivation to challenge or change the business spaces. We just want to protect the nice houses and yards sitting next to our nice houses and yards from being turned into multi-story boxes surrounded by concrete. Thank you.
I live at 31 Graham. And first of all, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for recommending this zoning change. I won't talk long, but I just wanted to refer to the Comprehensive Plan for the City of Athens, which was first written in 2003, I believe, at a cost of roughly a quarter of a million dollars, and it's under, it's been updated recently. And it says specifically that this neighborhood should be a low-density, owner-occupied residential enclave and a neighborhood conservation zone. And I think that this rezoning request furthers that objective of the Comprehensive Plan, and that's, you know, that's pretty much all there is to it.
Other concerned citizens would like to speak?
I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. And I'm going to be as brief as I can, understand the three-minute --
Can you say who you are?
Yes, I'm Bill Walker, and I'm representing Pete and Barb Good and Kim Calley back there, who are the principals in Good Incorporated. And because we have to move along quickly here, don't want to hold you any longer. I have prepared some handouts. May I approach the council members?
Take one, pass it down.
Pass it on down. And also, I have a plaque here. And this, Good Incorporated owns five lots that are zoned R2 presently. And this zoning proposed change impacts those five R2 properties that they own. Briefly, I'm asking council to send this back to the Planning Commission for two reasons. One, procedurally, I have provided to you a copy of, and I'm sure you're aware of it, the procedures for the amendment to the zoning ordinance. I direct your attention to 230903, and you can look at these later on, which talks about the application for the initiation of a zoning change made by residents of a proposed area. As Mayor Wile indicated, this is a result of this procedure. It is clear under 232907 that within 60 days of the receipt of the proposed amendment, the commission shall transmit its recommendations to City Council, or if they're going to have a public meeting, it can be extended to 90 days. And if I provided to you the minutes of all of the Planning Commission meetings, this zoning request for change was submitted to the Planning Commission on August 17, 2011. The 60 days expired on October 16, 2011, and we had a public hearing on May 2, 2012. So if you take a look at that and say there was a public hearing, that was as well outside the 90 days that the statute or the ordinance, the regulations of Chapter 2309 permit. So any way you interpret the regulations governing the process here, the application was not submitted to you within 60 or 90 days, depending on how you want to look at it. I would also assert that there was a procedural error with regards to the application itself. And I would ask council members to look at the application that was submitted on August 17, 2011, to determine whether the proposed amending ordinance, as approved by the law director, was submitted with that proposal, that zoning request change. 230904 states that any application by a citizen of an area to amend the official zoning map must have the ordinance approved by the law director when it is submitted to the Planning Commission. Procedural error number three that I would ask this body to look at involves, again, 230907, recommendations by commission. It states in there, "The commission may recommend that the amendment, as proposed by the citizens, be granted as requested. It may recommend a modification, or it may deny it. The written decision of the commission shall indicate the specific reasons upon which the recommendation is based, to include the basis for its determination that the proposed amendment is not consistent with the city's comprehensive plan." I ask you to take a look at the minutes that I provided to you of September 19, 2012, to see if this has been met, as well as the recommendation that was forwarded to council on October 2, 2012, to see if those specific requirements are set forth in either one of them. So it's our position that there have been three procedural errors here. I would also finally just point out that we attended the May 2, 2012 meeting. At that meeting, down at the Community Center, there was a map proposed that showed that the R2 lots owned by Goods were not going to be changed to R1, that they were going to stay R2. And we looked at that map, and that determination was made, and the Goods said, "Okay, we can accept that. It's going to be R2. It's going to remain R2. We have no problem with that." And lo and behold, on September 19, the decision was made to take it to R1 without any, with their understanding from that May 5 meeting that it was going to stay as an R2. So what it's done is it put them in a position, as owners of five lots down there that are R2, that can be used for duplexes or other uses, is now eliminating that. And their financial investment that they put into those lots when they purchased them is a substantial amount, is now going to be reduced or eliminated, because now it's an R1. The R1 area that is proposed, those R2s, changed into R1s, are abutting upon R3 areas. Now, as a residential, who is going to buy a lot to build a single-family residency that abuts upon an R3 area? And that's what they do, and you can look at the diagrams I presented to you. We would ask this commission to review the information that we have provided to it, and to send this back to the commission to, one, correct the procedural errors that we assert have occurred here, and also to reevaluate the issue of rezoning these two and the impact it has on the residents down there. The hearing was held on the 19th. The decision was made on the 19th. Thank you.
Other? Don't be shy.
My name is Kevin Gillespie, and I live at 29 Graham Park Boulevard and work at, on 11 Graham Drive. And by now, I'm somewhat of a veteran of these kinds of issues, but I've met a lot of people and learned a lot about planning and zoning and planning process, not only in Athens, but around the state as well. And I guess on one hand, I'm the voice, have become the voice of affordable and fair housing, including recently, we had, were educated by the Ohio Poverty Law Center, which is tied in with the Ohio Civil Rights Commission. And I didn't really know anything about fair housing at the time, but now I know a lot about fair housing. But really, tonight, I'm not, I'm not really talking about fair housing. More is, and I mean, I can't separate my neighbor-ness from the fact that I'm, you know, working to develop affordable and fair housing, because that would be impossible. But to the extent that I can speak as a neighbor, let me try to do that. It is a unique neighborhood, although it's not that unique. I mean, it, to me, it feels, I've said this before, it feels like places in larger cities. It's a diverse neighborhood. There, there's publicly funded housing, both through Section 8 vouchers and other kinds of housing. There are fairly large businesses, although the whole East State Street part of the development coming up, you know, from Walmart and then coming up Verizon stores just across the street, you can see the Holiday Inn from there. You know, it's, it's pretty urban. I don't know how you could get much more urban. It's very diverse. And my, I'm not sure what the process was, the community process was, but certainly the last open forum was, had a lot of people there with a lot of points of view. Mayor Wile, I wrote you this letter. Could I, could I, I don't really want to read it, but --
Submit it as a record or just do the highlights?
Yeah. I would like to submit it, if it's okay with you. And, and then just say what I've come to think about all of this planning process, where people like me get up kind of nervous, not, you know, stumble over my words, say stupid things, or not stupid. In my case, a lot of times, it is sort of goofy stuff. But, and I've watched, you know, I've watched the tapes over and over and over, and so I know I'm not very good at this. It seems to me that it should be more like business, that there should be people talking to each other with a give and take in a negotiation kind of thing, not standing up and pontificating and saying, "I'm wrong," and they're, or, see, I did it again, "I'm right and they're wrong," and, you know, that sort of nervous, tense, ideological, finger-pointing kind of way. It is a diverse neighborhood. It has a lot of B3 that is up for development, serious development, you know? It's, it's one of the most valuable pieces of land in Athens right now. And nobody knows what the future, we're sort of at a wall on State Street, but there will be development of that B3. Now, and then another thing that's happening in America, not just Athens, it really hasn't hit in Athens yet, is young people, they don't want, they choose increasingly urban-feeling kind of development. I mean, they don't, they don't want, they don't like them called condos, they like them called lofts and flats, and I think Don Linder spoke to that a little bit in the last hearing. You know, that, that section of Athens is valuable, and I, I'm not going to do it. I'm the affordable housing guy, you know, and fair housing guy. But I would think, I'm no expert on the subject, but I have talked to a fair number of businessmen. And I, you know, I think it's, it's a pretty, it's something that the neighborhood has legitimate, I own a private house, and I am, year after year, pouring money into it to improve it, adding on to it, and I, I value the direction of the development and the diversity. Like, the young urban people, like my daughter lives in inner-city in kind of a mixed area of DC, and young people who are fairly affluent, they like the diversity. They like the juxtaposition of different kinds of people. No compromise on safety or, or anything at all, zero, none whatsoever. But, I don't know. I guess I'm making a case for, this letter sums up my thinking about this a lot better, for not a legal argument, to throw it back to the Planning Commission, and I don't even, see, I'm advocating for something even richer than that. Some kind of mediated, negotiated, almost like a business, like what I do in my own business when I'm trying to do a deal, you know? Just talk back and forth, talk to each other, work it out, you know, go property by property and sort of have a back-and-forth kind of dialogue about the best use of this land for, for the people who own the properties, for the neighborhood, and for the community, because it is, I mean, it's a community asset as well. Who do I give this letter to?
Excuse me, I'm Barry Thomas. I live at 14 Charles Street. I hadn't intended to speak tonight, and I certainly don't want to get personal, but the wealth of information that we have recently heard about how the neighborhood is somehow unique and comparable to urban, large-city neighborhoods, that doesn't seem to be applicable My main concern is protecting the value of my property. And I see it being encroached upon by duplexes, not particularly attractive duplexes. And apparently, from what we just heard, there are even more designs on the single-family residences to build duplexes. I don't see that as helping this remain, as best it can at this point, a residential neighborhood. There will be residences, but they'll be living in multi-apartment complexes. For those people who have spoken here, who live above Jacobs, of course, they're not affected by the changes, the R2 status. We who live below Jacobs, down to East State Street, are affected. B3 was mentioned. I believe in the proposal, B3 is not affected in any way. I also believe that, if I understood it correctly, that all duplexes, for example, are grandfathered and are therefore protected. I'm not sure where the concern is there. Well, I could say more. I won't. Thank you. I'll leave it at that.
Other concerned citizens who would like to speak? Seeing none, I call the public hearing to close. Thank you very much for coming. The next step, I think, will be to bring this up at a committee hearing of the Planning and Development Commission, and we can talk about, after the council members kind of chew this over, and we will talk about the next steps. Thank you. When is the next development? Next week? No, two weeks from now. The 10th is the next, the next committee hearing. Thank you.
Two weeks from tonight.
Two weeks.
And we are going to move on to Finance and Personnel Committee. I'll give about two minutes for people to leave if they want to miss a great meeting.
It's exciting. You know where to plug this.
Finance and Personnel Committee, chaired by Councilmember Nysli.
Thank you, Mr. President. And on one other evening, could we be talking about finances that are affected for 2012, 2013, and 2014? So stay tuned. I'll try and refer to which year we're talking about on each of these items. The first item on the agenda, the non-union staffing salary, we really just have an update for you tonight, that the pay increases are still under consideration, and they will be reflected in the budget ordinance that we bring forward next week when we're considering And before we start the second agenda item, which is 2000, it's actually budget, 2013 budget, I would like to bring up a recommendation that was made earlier by Auditor Kathy Hecht for us to consider, and this is the income tax mix. And as you know, the, the income tax that comes in, a vast majority of that then goes towards salaries for personnel and fringe benefits for the city. And it's split into certain percentages, and we discussed that, those percentages last night. 15% of it off the top is, goes to the street rehab fund, the community center, and then also the recreation community facility. After that, 15% that comes off the top, there's an 84% that, that remains. At the current time, of that 84%, 74% is to the general fund, 19% is to the street fund, 5% to the recreation fund, and 1%, excuse me, 2% to the capital improvements fund. And our conversations in previous committee meetings was that city has been supportive of Athens transit and transportation issues, but that we do not have a fund that directs, we don't have an account, really, or the fund that directs money regularly on a regular basis, or a percentage of our income tax. And the suggestion that we're coming forward with tonight on the recommendation of the mayor and the auditor is to propose that we take 1% less from the general fund, so that would reduce that from 74 down to 73%, and that we propose that that 1% then go to transportation. And that would bring in close to $80,000 a year, I believe, along with our other revenues that we have for transportation. And would give us a stream -- And would give us a stream of money that could be there and be appropriated on a timely basis. Kind of sets it up as our priority and establishes this in a more permanent way. What we have been doing in the past years of operation, as we needed money during, throughout the year, we'd say, "Oh, time for another, you know, appropriation, to transfer more money into transportation or transit." And this, this would accomplish it by shifting that to one percent. Yes, Councilmember Pappy?
I'm just wondering, so eighty thousand to be spent, possibly how? Just to give an idea of how that might be spent.
This is generally our support for cost share for the running of the Athens Transit. Mayor Wile, do you have some more?
Normally, what we do, of course, is we get good deal funds from the state and the feds for our public transit, our Athens public transit. In the past, that has, that goes through our system because it, we basically, you know, get it and spend it. We contract with McDonald's Transport at this point to actually run a bus system. The administration of it, this past year, we moved to HAPCAP, Hocking Athens, Berry Community Action. Almost every year, we're putting in at least a hundred thousand into the mix from ourselves because, again, the total, the total that the state actually gives us is about maybe sixty percent max. And of course, it depends on in-kind matching. And this is, would be our in-kind match that's required. Some of the other match, of course, revenue comes from the Fairbox, which is about forty to fifty thousand. And then some for the, we get repaid for the gas that they used on the buses, or the diesel. And we actually, since we have a contract with Ohio University, we actually pay that and then get reimbursed by McDonald's. So that, so actually, we're having a pass-through of almost two hundred thousand. We anticipate about two hundred thousand being passed through next year. But about that, about three-quarters of that is going to be coming out of, you know, Fairbox and the reimbursement for the gas. It still is a component we have to come back with of our own. And that's really what the, approximately eighty thousand or one percent would be. And in the past, I've always, I've come to you and said, "Can you, you know, get money for this?" And it's usually about twice a year I'm running and asking you guys. It doesn't mean that we may need more, but I'm hoping that we don't. The anticipation, of course, is that HAPCAP would actually work out better, a better system, get more in-kind generation of funds. I know they've actually changed the contract with Summit on Coast Run, which is now part of the public system, it's now stand by itself. I also know that this plan is end of 2013 to change our configuration and increase ridership. So they're working on it, much better than my office, you know, myself and Charlene can do. So, we are, we are moving ahead on this. But again, I think we need that commitment, funds coming out. We may as well put a percentage in there. Backtracking, Deputy Auditor gave me some information. I don't have it with me right now, that in the past, we did have a mix where we actually had some money going into it. Probably in the Aorta age, which would be the mid-eighties, it was a straight fund of about thirty-eight thousand. They just stuck it in there and said, "Thirty-eight thousand goes to the bus system." I can get you that spreadsheet. I thought I probably sent it to the Finance Committee for historical perspective. And in the past, our income tax mix is buried in the general fund from its low sixty-four up to seventy-nine. So, I think we ought to dedicate a, a revenue stream to it. And I think, just so I don't have to come back and say, "Oh, we're out of funds," and then rush to do it so we don't have to spend results in at times. And again, I think it's, it's a good commitment, it's a requirement, I think, for any city to have some kind of public transit. And we're not doing subways, so.
I guess I would like to clarify, after inquiring, we receive around forty thousand dollars a year for the community center and what they do for the Go Bus and the set ticket sales. But that all goes back to the community center because that's where the, you know, their expense comes from. So, it's not like we don't get any sort of money from transit. It's just, just not quite enough to support it.
Any other questions of council members or any other comments? If not, I'm sensing a general consensus towards approving this. Okay, all right, we'll proceed with that. Next item that we have for discussion is the 2013 budget. And council members have received a copy of that that the mayor's office and city staff have been working on. You might remember that our information from Auditor Hecht a few weeks ago noted that we, this year, have approximately one million more in, in revenue that's come in. We've also spent about a million less in, in expenses this year, thanks in part to all the departments in the city that have done a really careful job of conserving the resources. And then we have projections for our revenue of next year. And with that, I'd like to turn over some of the discussion of the finer details to the mayor about what we're presenting.
Yeah, what you have in front of you, I gave you samples of it. Are the, again, what's involved has been added into it, for the most part. Some of the ones that aren't involved, of course, have been, are still being looked at. I have gotten, not gotten all the reports from the various departments. If you, if you look at the bottom line for the total fund in red for the general fund, it's about twelve point five, twelve point six million. Kathy Hecht's, Kathy Hecht's report of November 5th stated that we had certified resources of about fourteen point eight. She had talked about an estimated carryover of three million dollars. So we should be good. I'm looking, I, my concern, of course, and the reason why it's in red is because I'm looking at the estimated revenue that it's, we're going to spend more than our estimated revenue at that given time. I know the numbers are conservative. If you look at it, you realize, of course, the largest percentage is, of course, personnel, about seventy-seven percent. And again, there's still some pieces missing out of that. I plan to have it all done for the first reading. That would be December 3rd, I believe. Let's see, other things I need to add to it. The rest of it I've been adding in, I've actually kind of highballed the, I noticed I've been, we had a meeting earlier today in, in Auditor's meeting with Deputy Auditor Ray Hazlitt. I think it's been pointed out to, I've kind of highballed the Recreation Department's wish list, I believe, in terms of capital expenses.
So that's, that's the line, the recreation line at the very bottom of page one? Is that correct?
Page one, yeah.
So, three columns over, two ninety-two.
So, that's really, again, I, I'm going to trim that back as time goes on. But as, for the first reading, this should do everything we need to do on it. And I can't think of what else to add on.
Well, we'll probably have it shown back in time for Monday's first reading.
Yes, most definitely. Have to have heart-to-heart with some of the toys everybody wants to buy. We do anticipate trying to buy some capital improvements. Again, part of the reason why we have that million under budget for this year. And I misspoke to the Post reporter that the carryover was from 2012 carryover. I spoke with the Post reporter earlier today and I said it was for the anticipated carryover for this year. So I want to correct that, if possible. But again, we really have been telling everybody to be frugal. We have, we have some needs for, we have to replace our police cruiser. I've put that into budget this time. But there's conversation about doing a recreation hand-me-down as well as an IT vehicle. Because the IT people basically drive around in their own vehicles to get everything from point A to point B. So, these are some of the things to look at. Where we go with that and what we're talking about is another matter. Because we'll, we'll be looking and seeing what will work with the Green Fleet's procedures. Is there anything else I'm going to miss on that? The one thing that's not in here right now is I have to probably reappropriate the CDVG revolving loan fund for the, for the Southside Park, since that is not going to get done for this year. So I have to re-up it and put it back in, since the temperature changed and the, and the bidding process took longer than we thought. So, apologies to Rotary, but the fact is that it takes longer when you start taking outside money. So that will be in there, in the mix as well. But that's just a minor piece. Any, any questions you have on this? Does anybody have any? Yes?
Just curious, the first number that popped out at me was two hundred fifty thousand in Class 600 for Auditor's Office. Is that standard?
Let's see, where are you talking about? Yes, that is, that is correct. That's for refunds, for income tax refunds. I'm trying to remember, I think they spent quite a bit. I don't think I have it with me. They spent quite a bit and they actually had to add some, I think, this past year. So, yeah, that's, that's their job, is to give everybody refunds when they ask for them.
In fact, I think we had that as part of the appropriation ordinance a few weeks ago. So, some additional money is appropriated for, for refunds.
That is a large number.
Good question, yeah. Any other questions of council? So we'll be receiving, process-wise, we're, we'll be receiving then a revised version of this that will be in ordinance. Council members should also be on the lookout this coming week. We hope by, actually, this week, by Friday afternoon, then, staffing, staffing ordinance. And so what we'll see is some modifications in positions in the departments to which they are charged, but not major changes on that. But we always want to make council members aware of, of the staffing levels in the different departments. So those will be coming forward on the 3rd of December. We're going to have three meetings in December the 3rd, the 10th, and the 17th. And the 10th, which was committee night, we will also have a special session so that we can have three readings of the, of the budget.
Any other questions? No?
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We have some items to clean up for 2012 appropriations, one of which is an error on my part, and I apologize, and that we did not appropriate enough money for the fire truck. And the note that is coming due, it's actually the interest. So we need to add an eight hundred dollars to reflect that correction. And we will also have, coming before us next, next week, an ordinance that's the sidewalk assessing ordinance. And that's for the, reflecting the final property owner assessments information for the Grosvenor Street sidewalk and drainage improvements project. And then also for the North Court Street improvements to the sidewalk. So those will be, those will be coming through for, for ordinance reading. Another item that is 2012, kind of housekeeping, things that we want to make sure are done in the correct way through the Auditor's Office. And this is a request that's coming through for an account transfer from the code office. And these are for, it would be for purchase of a filing system, similar to the one that the municipal court is using. And just, as you can imagine, all the regulations that we have with city code, they, they end up with a lot of paperwork. So there will be some transfers from other funds, other accounts, the supplies, electric, professional services, and travel expenses where they have not spent their money and they're now requesting the transfer over to be able to, to purchase that filing equipment.
They basically want to improve their filing systems. And again, they've been, so they're in, so they have excess money in TC 200s and 300s and they need to move it into 500s to be able to purchase this.
And then another ordinance that we'll have coming through next week is the renewal of the HAPCAP, the housing loan fund. And this has been effective from one one, or the new one will be effective on January 1, 2013. So it's an agreement that we, that we have, a standard agreement. And we will have copies of that attached to the agenda next week along with the ordinance so that you can, so that you can read through that. But mayors, I understand, yeah, it's standard.
This is part of the, they used to call it the CHIP program, Community Housing Improvement Program or Strategies. And we always had HAPCAP administer that. This has to do with housing improvement, housing rehab improvements for low and moderate income. We need authorization to re-up that and renegotiate it and have them apply again. Most of the time, they do owner-occupied rehabs and repairs. I think the last cycle was for the Habitat, took twenty thousand to put money towards the Habitat House in, in the city. We both donated lots as well as they, again, you have a series of strategies and programs to make for housing improvements. Some of them are owner-occupied improvements, some actually rental improvements, which really doesn't get a lot of mileage. Other ones, there's down payment assistance, they usually put a few in that mix as well. But that, again, is a difficult thing to do because the housing stock prices are usually higher than anybody can afford a mortgage who's in the, in the poverty ra, in the income range, low moderate income range. So the strategy is usually a little bit of everything, but mostly it's rehab and rebuilding, repairs of, of owner-occupied structures in the city. So it's improving our housing stock and making it easier for our low moderate income housing people, people to afford housing. We need to re-up that. Any other que, usually, I think we went for quite a bit last time. Was it four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, I think?
Yes, but this is just entering into the agreement. It's not submitting application. I believe it's a two-year agreement that will run through December 2014.
Okay. So it's not the application, sorry.
Thank you for the clarification on that. Another item that we have for consideration tonight is for something that will take place in 2014. And these are the elected official salaries, specifically those for city council members. And by way of history, the, an ordinance was affected, or passed four years ago for council members to have a zero percent increase in salary. And so that is the, the rate at which it's been for these past four years. Now, and the reason that it's coming up for consideration now is we need to have this in effect for office holders, city council members who would be taking office in 2014. And so, we're the persons that need to be deciding it so that there isn't, you know, a consideration of influence, I suppose. And the rate has been at zero. The previous rate increase before that was three percent. And so, one option would be to continue at zero. Another option would be to consider a modest increase, as have many of the other departments of elected officials within the city. Yes, Councilmember Pappy?
Thank you. Thanks for jogging our, our memory and taking a little trip down the history there with the four years of, I think it was one of the early things I remember voting on that-
Actually, it was the mayor who reminded me this afternoon. So, thank you, Mayor Wile.
And if I recall, at the time, we were also really worried and concerned about some grave fiscal issues. And it made complete sense to take a zero percent increase, lack of increase. So I, I see merit potentially in my new one percent raise as something to consider in the future. Cost of living increases and whatnot.
Other comments from other council members? Yes, Councilmember Reisner?
Yes, I would agree with my colleague here. I think one percent is a very modest proposal, as Melton would have put it. And I, politically, I'm not embarrassed, embarrassed to say that. I think we're worth it. I know you are.
I think the thing to keep, I think the thing to keep in mind is that other citizens, and we, you know, may decide to run for office. And so this isn't necessarily just for those of us who are currently serving on council, but kind of would set the amount for those who might be coming into office on January 1, 2014. So it's something to be considered for the future. And, you know, I would think, too, that to continue at the zero wouldn't necessarily be healthy, you know, in, you know, for, for looking at our operations in the city and what it costs, but also then to, you know, to, for people to be able to have this position, to consider it. It is a part-time position. It's a very modest amount of salary, I think, for the hours that, that the council members put in. So, and it keeps it, at least, so that other people, lots of other citizens consider, can consider it as part-time income and an option to serve. Councilmember Fall?
I always think that kind of, people see us negotiating our future salaries. But that, as you point out, there may be other people as have, in the past, taken chairs here at the council, city council. And I would like, you know, this is between contracts at the university and other part-time work that I have. This is my main employment. And I'd like to point out that, that it is more than half-time. I mean, when we put in all the amount of time that we put in on meetings, you know, we spent a couple hours this morning talking about sewers. And, you know, and the meetings, the, trying to get people together, constituent meetings, that city council is never meant to be a volunteer- city council is never meant to be a volunteer position. And it's a stipend, it's quoted as a stipend, but stipends are not necessarily, you know, and we look at living wages and stuff. You know, you see all the Walmart, Black Friday boycotts, and people who come out and talk about living wages. And I don't think that we should be embarrassed talking about the sort of, kind of salary. I mean, it is salary for some of us, it's our salary that we, you know, take home because we do spend a lot of time and energy on this.
I'm turning to the red. Sorry.
I would just like to kind of bring things into perspective too, what a 1% raise would represent. And for city council, we're talking anywhere from $75 to $90, I believe, so.
For the year.
So therefore.
Low on a dinner.
True. So I do want to say that. And also, I'm in agreement with the idea that individuals who may want to become council members in the future, you know, when you think about it, to keep abstaining, or, you know, passing on a raise, it makes for an interesting uphill battle from that point forward, you know, with trying to at least keep on par with inflation and other things. So, you know, I think 1% is very reasonable, more than reasonable.
Yes, Mayor Wile?
First of all, you're all public service, so you never really are off the clock. You know that, I know that. So whatever you choose for the next round of council is your choice. And again, as public servants, thank you for doing the work, because it is more than part-time in many cases. You can't walk down the street without somebody telling you what needs to be done or what needs to be changed. So it's your choice, and realize the higher percent you put in there, the more competitive race you may see. So we may get some, see what happens. No, I'm just joking. But you can, it is, you know, it is a conversation, and you do spend a lot of time on it. I know Chris does, I know all of you do. We were in two meetings today, one meeting there, you know, meeting as well. So there's a lot of things that go on running the city, and your expertise is wanted. And to actually devalue the position by not adding anything means that we won't have a good competition. Not that you probably want it, but the fact is, democracy demands it. And it's for, it is for the next council, it's not for you. There's no guarantee that's your seat. So it's your choice. And again, it's part of the process of how this works.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments and the perspective. Yes?
I'd like to say that often I'm walking down the street and people stop me and tell me how much they like something that the city's done too. So it's not always, not always problems.
Good thing it is not, good thing it isn't a dollar amount, otherwise you have to port yourself to the ethics commission. We like what you're doing.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Gosny?
I respect all the opinions, and we've heard some very good reasoning here. My own personal preference has always been that we should keep our raises low. I think 1% is very low. I spoke very strongly that we should have a 0% last time before we voted on it. I don't feel as strongly because our budget is in a much better shape this year than it has been in the past. But still, I personally would advocate to keep the salaries where they are.
I'll take his raise.
I think I'm sensing almost consensus on 1%.
That's a joke.
And appreciate you keeping us in conservation-minded attitude, Councilmember Gosny. Okay. Any other miscellaneous items that I might have missed for financing personnel?
Just that I always ask in case something is found this week that's an end-of-the-year item cleanup, that can be included in our appropriations on Monday.
Understood, yeah.
Thanks for the warning.
Okay.
We'll move on to City and Safety Services Committee chaired by Professor Pappi.
Thank you. First item of business is an increase in the water rates, which the City Service Safety Director has indicated will be jumping up to 3% effective January 1, 2013. And I will offer you this opportunity to expand on that.
Right. I apologize to throw that at you, but.
I'm sorry.
And probably should have had this conversation prior to discussing your salary, since the water rates will be increasing. This has been done every year since I've been in office, and even prior to when I was in the position that I am. 3% keeps us able to keep moving. We just completed our 2012 water system improvements, as you know, on Joneswood Terrace, Vanson Harris, McAfee. And we want to continue this. And we put away West Union, so we need to still save money in order to be able to achieve that in the next few years. So that'll take an effect.
And this is thousands of feet of line that has been replaced that is archaic and old and dilated.
As well as hydrants and valves.
Correct. Right. Member Pappi just reminded us as well as the additional fire hydrants. I believe maybe 17 in total that were, at least 14.
Yeah. And then combined the way that we have the engineering and public works now, then you get the resurfacing. So, I mean, there's just, it's just nice packaging, so. But yes, the water rates will be increasing January 1st.
And I think you indicated that by showing this to me that they'll be in the mail, people will be receiving. Is that correct with their bills? Indication as to why and what this is about?
Yes. And we'll get it up on our website, too.
Thank you.
I'd still like to point out that Athens still has a relatively low water rate compared to many, many, many communities within Ohio. And I think that the city has made steps towards making it more efficient with the combination of the city engineering and city services. So, you know, we're not looking at increasing on a hugely expensive system. So, I mean, this is a cheap system when you look at other communities within, even our neighbors. So it's.
Thank you.
And again, the idea is to do this a little bit at a time. I've talked to other mayors who've basically put it off, put it off, and all of a sudden they have to put a 15% in there because they waited five or six years, or 20%, which is kind of a sticker shock for many. But it also, what it does, it actually starves their departments for capital improvement and replacements of equipment. So these are, these are what you look at. Things do wear out. We know that already. You see the pipes bust, you see the hydrants that don't shut off all the way because they're kind of rusty. So these are things where we have to keep going. Our improvements that we did this year, of course, we put out a loan that's going to tie us up for what, 30, 20 years?
20.
20 years. So, and we still, we lean back on that, realize we're talking about trying to do West Union, and we backed off on that. So we still have West Union on our plate. We still have other areas that we're going to be doing paving as well as infrastructure underneath. So additionally.
Well, issue next year with our Columbus Road Lancaster, there'll be some improvements in the utilities there also.
It also seems to me that it's cost-effective to make these changes now instead of constantly dealing with broken lines and fixes and patches and overtime for employees and all the dilemmas that warrant, boil orders, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm not saying those still won't happen.
Right.
But at least we're staying on top of it and doing improvements.
You and I both know that. We can look down second street, we see the gates open on a weekend, we know there's a water line break. That's how I check. I see the gates open, I know somebody on the weekend's got to fix something. Then I listen for the boil order maybe. But, you know, these things do bust, and these things do wear.
I would just say that I really appreciate this kind of forward-looking approach to dealing with the infrastructure issues, because it seems like for many years it was just to fix and patch. And finally, there's a vision, you know, a way to move forward, and I think that's really important.
Member Gosny?
Is the 3% is that on base rate and any additional, you know, per thousand gallons?
Yeah, I have the new rates. I thought I attached them when I emailed that I mean on.
Yeah, I think it is.
I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, I went to council, the rates as well as the announcement of.
Anything else regarding this matter? Okay.
No.
Moving on to miscellaneous, this evening, we have, I'll be brief in addressing this introduction, but we have Professor McGinn here to readdress council on some concerns regarding looking at our clean air and clean water. There's been a lot of discussion within the community, and this is, again, a community-driven idea coming to us, approaching council with forward-thinking ideas in action. So with that, Professor McGinn. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I was privileged on September 24th to address the city council, and I am here again tonight to jar your memories and also to report on activity on the side of the citizenry pursuing this question of fracking and the danger that fracking and associated activities, injection wells, and the rest of it pose to the health, safety, and happiness, and even the economic stability of our community. I'm happy to report that we have formed a committee. It just actually got started about 10 days ago. We had our first meeting downstairs at 7:00 in preparation for this, for coming in and making our report. I think it's important to take note of the members of the committee. John Howell, you know very well, he is not able to be here tonight. Jeff Reisner is a member of our committee. He has an excused absence for missing the first meeting. Richard Hogan is here. Christine Hughes was there at the meeting, but she is, had to leave for another meeting. Melena Miller is also on the committee. She's out of town right now. Beverly Flanagan is here, member of our committee. Ed Newman, a likely member, at least he will be an advisory member, he's also out of town. So these people have formed this committee, and the committee is, has a name. We actually came up with, it's really the Bill of Rights Committee is the simplest way. Bork, I don't know. But Jane Jacobs, I don't know if you're familiar with Jane Jacobs, but she is a very famous, at least one of my heroes, community organizer-type person. She always advised that committee names be specific and don't worry about how long they are. Because what you're trying to do is develop public support for something, and if you are specific enough, you can get people to support that even if philosophically you have all kinds of different points of view represented. So what we have is a committee to enact a community bill of rights with the aim of banning fracking and associated activities in, at, or near the aquifer that supplies water to the city of Athens. And as you know, this, the ordinance that we are proposing, that we are urging a city council to consider, was drafted with the help of the Community Environment Legal Defense Fund, which is CE LDF. I think Mr. Butler was instrumental in getting that, getting information from CE LDF. John Howell and Elise McNabb were also instrumental in having this drawn up. And it was drawn up specifically with Athens in mind, and the hope was that city council would then consider turning it into an ordinance, and then the community, that is, the committee and the campaign that we intend to mount, would then follow up with political activity. That is, a ordinance would be followed by a referendum in the next election, perhaps, well, I think in November. But just again, to jar your memories, this ordinance, which you have a copy of, says specifically that is, the ordinance is establishing a community bill of rights for Athens residents and natural communities, and protecting those rights by prohibiting shale gas and oil extraction and related production activities, and by subordinating the privileges bestowed on corporations to the rights and governance of the people. So there really is a bill of rights in there, that is, we have a right to do this, and it's codified in the Ohio Constitution that we have a right to do this. Whereas there are many laws and regulations that ignore the Constitution and instead are concerned about protecting the rights of corporations and giving the rights of jurisdiction over where and when to drill strictly to government bureaucrats. And the laws say that, but we are coming back and saying, no, these laws are weak, they are unsustainable, if challenged, if challenged on grounds of constitutionality. So that is the approach that we're taking. Just to remind you again, one of the wordings of the, one of the passages in the ordinance, it says the jurisdiction having to do, what is the scope of this? The jurisdiction of a municipal corporation to prevent the pollution of its water supply and to provide a penalty shall extend 20 miles beyond the municipal corporation limits. So we're talking about an ordinance that would ban fracking within 20 miles of Athens. So that's also very, very important. It would be almost, I don't know if it would be meaningless, but it would be highly symbolic and perhaps not too substantive if we only banned the dirty water, you know, at the border of the town. I mean, the dirty water coming in, we say, well, you know, we ban that, it's already here. You have to get to the watershed, you have to get to the aquifer, we have to ban the pollution of our air and soil and water in the entire aquifer. So that's the effort there. Also, it says in the ordinance, this is all these wherases, so it doesn't make a full sentence. The ordinance removes legal powers and authority from gas extraction corporations within the city. Removes legal powers and authority from the corporations within the city in recognition, in recognition that those legal powers are illegitimate and unjust, in that they place the rights of a corporate minority over the rights and political authority of a majority of Athens city residents. So this is what we're talking about, not working with the regulators, but rather challenging them that our right to clean air and water is more important, has priority, priority over the rights of corporations to make money. And the whole scientific basis of our approach is that fracking is dangerous. It's dangerous in the procedure, it's dangerous in the process, it's dangerous in the preparation, it's dangerous in the cleanup. And this cleanup may go on for centuries, at least for years and years. We see that in the coal industry 100 years, and we're still, we're still dealing with pollution there. So this, it's just nonsense that the laws exempt the companies from even telling us what's in the fracking water. This is just absurd. But if that's in the law, that we have to ignore what's in the fracking water, we have to say that this law is not fair. It's not just, it violates our rights as citizens. At least we have to know the facts, and if it's challenged in court, then we say, let's bring in some expert witnesses. That's the one thing that never happens when we just talk about laws and regulations, because the expert witness is irrelevant. They've already decided that it's a proprietary secret what's in this, what's in this water. So now we say, no, 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 that violates our rights, we claim it's unsafe, let's have that argument in court. Let's have some scientists come in and see what they say. Let's not just listen to the spokesman from the corporations tell us what's true and what isn't true. So that's the basic idea behind this committee. We want to provide community support to the city council in the effort. We hope that the city council will take this up. Now, one thing that I want to stress is that we have a lot of confidence, or at least let's say we have a lot of faith in the city council, because the city council has already done some amazing things. There were previous actions. There was a letter of protest to the Bureau of Land Management in October of 2011 protesting the granting of permits to drill in the Wayne National Forest because it threatens our watershed. The city council signed on to that unanimously. Many of the members here signed that letter, and also other members that are not here, like Nancy Bayne, signed it, and it was signed also by the mayor. As far as I remember, President McDavid of Ohio University sent a summer. As far as I remember, President McDavis of Ohio University sent a similar letter of protest. Interesting question is whatever happened to that? Did we ever get a response from the Bureau of Land Management, the city of Athens? Is there anything in the file that says, you know, really, we really appreciate your concern, and we share your interest in clean air and clean water, and as a matter of fact, there's no danger whatsoever, so therefore, we're going to give out these permits? Or did they just not answer? I would really like to know that because if this business ever comes up in court, that is going to be a point to be, a point against the government that they don't even answer. What are we out here, living in, where, the wilderness? We don't even get an answer? I'm very curious to find out if President McDavis ever got an answer. That would be, in fact, I plan to walk into his office someday, not politely, and ask him. Because if we didn't get an answer, and if he didn't get an answer, this is outrageous. This is really outrageous. So, that was one thing. February, that's, just a few months later, this city council passed a resolution not, against the idea that corporations are persons, and that was a very important, also, not directly related to the fracking issue, but in fact, it is related. I mean, these corporations are running roughshod, and part of the reason is that they have these powers, and we are now in a position, we feel, to challenge them. The wellhead protection plan that the city put into effect a few months later in April was also a very important measure that was taken. It's clear that this city council is determined to do something about this fracking and the danger that it poses to our community, and so this here is another resolution. This one, however, is limited in the sense that it doesn't have a very much, very wide scope. We're not talking about a 20-mile from Athens protecting the watershed. We're talking about protecting the wellhead. Also, I think it's pretty vulnerable to lawsuits, possibly from ODNR or from the industry, more so than this one would be because this one is appealing to a higher authority. It's not just saying, we're making a law that goes against your law. I mean, when you do that at the state level, generally, you don't win. Although, it may scare them off. It may buy you some time. It may induce the state level to rethink things, but under the current atmosphere of so much power and so much protection from the government that is enjoyed by these corporations doing this gas and oil extraction, it's hard to imagine that we would win a case like that. But here, we're talking about a possible win because it has been, they have won in court in Pittsburgh already. They've scared them off in Mansfield, and other cities in Ohio have started to put in these same kinds of ordinances because they are feeling more confident that they could possibly win in court. And according to CE LDF, they've never lost a court case. And that's, that's a very interesting little piece of information that we need to, need to be thinking about very seriously. Thirdly, we had, I think, a severance tax proposal from this council. So, if we're stuck with fracking coming into the city and into our area, then at the very least, we have to monitor them. We have to weigh the trucks. We have to fix the roads. We have to, who knows what we have to do? And we have, we have to have first responders available in case there's an accident. We have pressure on medical system. We have pressure on the police and fire. So, the way we would have to handle that would be, we'd have to tax these companies so that they would provide some funding so that the city could function. These are, these people are coming into our community. They have to contribute, I would think. Well, that's what city council thought, passed severance tax law. I think it came back, more or less. What happened to that? I think it, they decided that you couldn't tax these people. We can't tax them because they, taxing, this is bad. Haven't you heard? This is, you know, since, ever since 1980. It's been a bad thing to tax anybody for any reason. And so, therefore, for some reason that I can't even, I can't articulate, the regulations, laws, the system that we're living under does not even allow us to tax these people. So, we say again, this is not fair. This is not just. This is, this is dangerous. It is destructive of the environment. It is endangering our water supply, our public health, OU enrollments. I can't imagine things that would go wrong if all this activity were suddenly to be landing on our heads. As a consequence, what I'm feeling is that this city council has already done everything it can possibly do to handle the situation, to deal with the situation within the confines of current laws and regulations, and it's still not enough. I think we all know that. I think we all feel that. What this ordinance presents is an alternative approach that appeals to the wording of the Ohio State Constitution that gives priority to human beings, to their rights, to their pursuit of happiness, whatever you want to call it, certainly the right to pursue economic activity, to have clean air, clean water without these threats to the environment continuously coming in, and also the right of the people to govern themselves, to have some kind of home rule, some kind of ability to decide for themselves what kinds of things are safe and what kinds of things need to be carefully monitored and regulated. And if it comes to a fight, as I said earlier, because we're appealing to our rights as citizens of the United States and citizens of the state of Ohio, we suddenly bring in the science, bring into the argument the science because all the laws and regulations ignore the science. We're saying, no, as human beings, we have a right to know what's in that fracking water. We have a right to know what's coming up out of the ground from a mile below, not just what goes down, but what comes up. And we know from certain studies that there's radioactivity coming up that didn't go down to begin with. So, all the fracking chemicals plus radon and other things that are coming up are definitely part of the scientific governance that we want to put on the table so that whenever anybody talks about fracking, whether it's dangerous or not, we say, let's look at the science. That's a very important outcome for this approach. So, because of the past actions of the city council, I feel rather hopeful that this will go forward. At least I am urging and hoping that the city council will consider this, taking up this ordinance, passing it as a, as an ordinance, and then putting it on the ballot for November. And then our committee will pledge an all-out campaign, just like we did. We put Obama in power. We have lots of people. We knocked down SB 5. We have people like Mary Jo Wiley and Rob Wiley on the committee that are ready to go, and I could name a few other people that haven't committed yet. But we know we will win in, on the, when it comes to a ballot, a ballot decision. So, what we ask is that the city council would consider putting this on the ballot. We do have a Plan B. If city council, for any reason, decides it doesn't want to deal with the issue, then the committee will mount a petition, will get signatures from the community, and we will have a ballot initiative, and it will be on the ballot in November, and we would ask you, please, vote for it. But believe me, it would be a whole lot easier, a whole lot easier, if you're inclined to think that this is the right thing to do, a whole lot easier if the city council would put it on the ballot, and then the committee is concerned with getting out the vote strictly. Because then the city knows where city council stands. City knows what the town leaders feel, how the town leaders feel about this issue. It's much easier for us then to get out the vote from people who don't know or who need to be convinced. We can say, city council, put it on the ballot. We are in support of this, and we will pledge an all-out effort.
Thank you, Professor.
Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments for Professor McGinn? Okay. Mayor Wild.
I would point out today's Columbus Dispatch talks about some of the polluted water from a result of mine runoff. They're doing a series of water quality at the Columbus Dispatch, so look at today's Columbus Dispatch on that, shows a map, which includes Athens County in terms of acid mine runoff, as well as some of the more toxic mines to the north and to the east of us, or rather northeast of us. Also, I noticed today's New York Times also has a city in Colorado that also banned wells, drilling, fracturing, hydro-fracking as well. So, this is not, you know, it's not just us in our little area. Of course, we're having a public meeting, ODNR Wednesday at 6:00.
But it's not a hearing.
It's not a hearing, yes. And I don't know if you got the little Q and A they sent us, how it's all safe and handy and wonderful. So, again, it's not really that scientific either. I didn't see any citations. So, again, this is still an issue that's coming at us, full steam, or full frac, whatever you want to call it.
And I would say, Professor McGinn, thanks for all your hard work. And you asked that question about the response from the state or whomever when you sent a protest letter, and there seems to be, whether it's the federal government and now our state government, ODNR, they like to have public open houses rather than public hearings. We here in Athens City encourage people to come. We had a public hearing earlier this evening that will all go into record. Somebody can go back and read that and talk later to people. A public open house doesn't afford that.
Exactly.
And, you know...
And if anybody has a good idea, they only tell it to one person, and it doesn't get around the room.
And I think...
It bypasses the sunshine laws.
It absolutely does. Absolutely.
So, it's, we all need to work together, I guess, would be one way as a community, to come together.
Okay, so, process-wise, you're actually advocating to put this on, to have city council to buy ordinance resolution to put this on the ballot for next year?
Exactly.
Is that what you're asking?
Exactly.
Okay. So, that would be, you know, you'd be opening up to people and say, we want this on the, that all term is to get X amount of signatures. You have a number of signatures?
Right. Yeah, it's not really that many, but we collected 230 last year, last fall, and that was, that was, that was on the person who had business. We collected those in just a few weeks.
Okay.
There's no question we could get lots of signatures, but again, that would not be my preferred way to do it, simply because it's less efficient, but also, it leaves the public not knowing how city council feels, and I think that's an important factor. If, in fact, city council feels positively disposed, you're putting it up for a vote, basically. So, you're not just hanging out there, so to speak. But because, the controversy is, the controversy arises because the laws and regulations ignore the science, and they're allowed to do that because of the way the laws and regulations are written. So, if we, that's why it has to come to a vote because it's actually controversial whether fracking is safe or not.
It also, not only that it ignores science, it also ignores home rule and zoning and those sort of things.
Exactly.
And the people, and what they want for their community, and community norms and health and safety.
Exactly.
And it's not just science.
That's right. That's exactly right.
It's a broader thing than science.
You're absolutely right. It's, bill of rights is really the fundamental issue. That's exactly right.
Any other questions or comments? And I think the mayor started to address what are the next steps. Is that correct?
Well, you probably would have to pass an ordinance, right? Is that how it works, I believe, to say, let's put this on a ballot? You need the wording to be put together, and you probably have to watch the timetable for the election cycles. I assume we're talking about primary versus, this would be next year?
Yeah, the way I looked at it, it was, it has to be in the general election.
General election.
And that would be November, and then the wording and everything has to be approved by the auditor or the city auditor, and that has to be, I think, something like mid-July.
Okay. So, we have a process.
They have to be ready.
And the timeline has to be put together, essentially.
And I would suggest that we don't bring this up, like, next, in the end of this session.
Correct.
Because we don't want to force it in three weeks.
Correct.
When procedure will be very important, so...
I agree. Yeah, I concur, wholeheartedly.
Yeah.
So, you will continue this dialogue in the next year, 2013?
But I think, you know, given our past actions, that this would not be the only thing that would be on our, on our plate in January.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments?
I would just like to say something real quick because I think that if, if this does become an ordinance-driven initiative that will, to be on the ballot, or if it's one of signatures, if it is one through city council, something I would like to say is that it's a time to really stress for the citizens of Athens to start contacting your city council members, you know, within your wards and city council members at large because the signature drive, you'd be hearing from the citizens as the drive is going on and city council, rather than city council making a decision in a box. It's paramount that the citizens of Athens contact the city council members and let us know how you feel about an issue like this.
Thank you. Thank you again, Professor McGinn.
Thank you.
I don't believe there's anything else unless there's any miscellaneous from the city service safety director, but I don't have anything else. Mayor, do you have any other miscellaneous? Okay. That concludes my...
Okay, so, we have dealt with our agenda. We're going to call it an end at 8:30. Thank you.